Let's all take our seats. We'll get started here in a second. Okay, welcome everybody to the City of Placerville City Council meeting, regular city council meeting of June 27th, 2017. Could you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Mark, start us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. Regina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Here.
Alright, we don't have any presentations to the public. Do any of our city council members have any brief comments they'd like to make? Tricia?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Just one. Mr. Yule, the corner of Broadway and Main Street looks spectacular. My goodness, how did that get cleaned up?
We just did it.
It looks amazing.
Yeah, it got to the point where we were really worried about fire, and so we just went in and cleaned it up.
Wow, well, I came back into town after this weekend, and I was like, whoa, what happened here? I mean, it just looks, you just did a bang-up job. It looks so lovely and nice and neat. Thank you so much. Really appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome.
And I feel the same way about, every day it seems like I go see someplace new that you've cleared all the weeds in there wonderful.
Okay.
Mark?
Do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate the Goldbug Park Development Committee on their recent first edition of the newsletter that the park has ever had. They issued it yesterday. I think they've sent it, I saw online, and they've sent it out to all the council members and city staff. It's very nicely done. I look forward to many future editions.
Great.
One other item I would like to take just a moment and apologize for some confusion on our part, and the apology would be issued to the business owners and customers along this particular block of Main Street. It appears that there was some missed, confusion regarding our on-street parking over the weekend, and I see that we've gotten that all squared away. And I'm sorry for the inconvenience that that caused, but I appreciate staff getting it straightened out and getting the contractor out of our important parking places. So it was always difficult over a weekend with a number of businesses. So I apologize for that on behalf of the staff, and we'll make sure that we don't do that again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly. Patty?
I already said.
Oh, okay. I would just like to say that we had another successful brew fest downtown on Saturday, and it was really very nice, a good crowd. I don't know what the final ticket sales were, but it all went well, and I and myself and Yvette had a fun time pouring beer. Always a good time. And I understand, I talked to PD, the folks that were there at the event, and it sounded like things went fairly well, without incident, as we like to say. So we were able to drink beer on Main Street and not have too much stuff happen. So it's always, it reflects well on our community that we can hold our beer. Anyway, but it was a good time, and one of those great things that you get to do on Main Street, and it makes this town wonderful. Okay, so, that's it. Alright. Mayor? If I could, Steve Yule has one quick announcement, if he can do that now, please.
Why, of course. Yes, I do. I have some good news. There is going to be a 39th Annual Hangtown Christmas Parade. Tim Taylor of Hangman's Tree Ice Cream Saloon has stepped up to the plate to sponsors this year parade will be held on December 3rd, so we're back on track. That's really good news.
Well, it doesn't surprise me at all. I knew someone would step up and hit a home run, and so far that has happened. Thank you very much, Tim Taylor and all the Taylors, and we look forward to yet a wonderful Christmas parade. Close session report.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did not take reportable action tonight in close session.
Thank you. Would we like to adopt this particular agenda?
I'll move for adoption.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any ceremonial matters? None? Okay. Okay, this is a public comment period on non-agenda items. This is for items that are, as I just said, not on the agenda. We cannot take action on anything except for very strange and abnormal circumstances. You have three minutes. Please state your name and where you're from for the record, and be nice in your comments. Don't say anything you wouldn't want to have said about yourself. So, anyway, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Don Vanderkar, longtime active member of this community. I'm here again to speak on behalf of the people without houses in our community. Those of us working to care for homeless people are most happy to see the county recently take positive steps. The Opportunity Knox Continuum of Care Group is increasing its efforts. The sheriff has established a team of deputies who work with homeless people. The county has established cooling centers in our libraries. We're hopeful that such steps will encourage the city to take similar actions. The Pneumatic Shelter Consortium of Churches currently has available only five and maybe only four churches with open doors for homeless people. We're desperately looking for as many as three more churches to open their doors so that shelter will be available each day of the week during the winter months of November through March. An alternative is to find a permanent shelter so that our approximate 200 volunteers can staff one facility instead of seven spread all over the county, and the facility can provide shelter on a more permanent basis. This would give people without houses a better chance at making appointments and getting lives in order. The pneumatic shelter benefits the community in many ways. The sheltering homeless people gets them off the streets, easing concerns of business. Sheltering people allows data collection, which is sorely needed for future funding. Shelter allows access to public health agencies by public health agencies to conduct triage and inoculations. Costly use of Marshall's Emergency Room would thereby be reduced. Despite overuse of ER, many homeless people die on our streets as a result of having minimal shelter and care. In addition to health concerns, sheltering homeless people can reduce police enforcement's activity and can reduce the risk of wildfire. Please, City of Placerville, do something to help our citizens without houses who are suffering and dying on the streets. You're mandated to protect public health and safety. I encourage you to respond to that mandate by taking actions to help the volunteers from Pneumatic Shelter Program and other related programs setting, help these programs get a significant number of our citizens without houses off the streets, cared for, and given a second chance to be productive members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Charlie Basham with the Goldbug Park Development Committee, and I'm here tonight just to give you a heads up that there's going to be a murder at Goldbug Park. It's going to be held, it's going to happen on July 15th, Saturday, July 15th at 6:00 PM. And we're forming a positive up to 60 citizens to help find the culprit. It's a fun whodunit, you might say. We're not sure if the motive was for greed for gold. Maybe it was a love affair that went bad, but we do know that there might be another act of refueling justice in Old Hangtown that night. And I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. The tickets are $45. It is a fundraiser for Goldbug Park Development Committee. We've partnered with Nello Olivo Winery. They'll be doing free wine tasting, but they'll also be selling some of their finer wines by the glass or the bottle. We also will have non-alcoholic beverages. There'll be a raffle for some fun items that some of the local merchants will be providing. And the entertainment will be provided by Kathy Drew's Interactive Entertainment. They've been active in the area for many years, and they've done multiple murder mysteries in the past on trains especially, and so they're bringing a certain level of expertise and experience to the event. And I just want everybody to know, the tickets are available through Placerville News, Mary Meter, who's on our board, willing to sell the tickets, but also you can get them at the Eldorado County Chamber of Commerce office. Any questions?
Yes.
Charlie, thanks so much for talking about this fantastic, really fun event. How do we get raffle prizes to you, raffle items, if we want to donate those?
You could talk to me, or Mary Meter's going to be collecting them at Placerville News.
Okay, great.
She's the one that's going to hit the...
I'll get something together from Robinson's Pharmacy and get that to Mary.
That would be terrific. I do know that the winner, the person that does solve the crime, the whodunit, and has not only who did it, but why, Nello Olivo has offered up a $100 bottle of wine as the prize.
Wow, that's great. What a fun idea.
So, pretty serious. This will be fun, and I hope this becomes, if it's successful, it becomes an annual tradition with us.
Love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sounds very cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Alright. Would anyone else care to speak? Alright. Non-agenda items. Thank you all very much.
Do we have any, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have any written communications?
None.
Okay. I keep doing it. I'm a little scattered right now. Let's see, alright, the consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, do any of you wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I do have a comment on an item.
Well...
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Alright. I would just like to thank our staff on item 8.6 for being on top of this legislation and making our rural voice heard and protecting local control, which is always critical to us.
Yes.
So, thank you for getting this letter of opposition in.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's...
The cell towers.
I know, but I want to follow up with that, regarding this, it comes through the League of Cities.
Yes.
And so this is one of the pluses of us belonging to that organization.
So true, Patty.
Because they keep us abreast of all these things, and then they'll send us a notification when this is going to happen, and then they ask for our backing, and so that's how all this comes about.
Yes, it's very true. Very true. Okay, I'd like to open up the podium for a public comment on our consent calendar. Yes, it would.
I had a couple of concerns. One is Kirk Smith of Placerville. I was alarmed at the title because I think it's misleading. I support your letter, by the way, but it talks about cellphone towers, and instantly I conjured up the image of the two cellphone towers, for example, we have on top of Sacramento Hill, and that's not the case, as I read the actual bill. What you have down here, the information, comes from a lobbyist organization, and when I looked at other information that's available about the 5G system, it's quite different. It's not towers, they're small units. It's like, for example, what you have at the top of CNH Motors that all of you pass by whether you notice it or not, or on the top of the old city hall, and it's used to provide for the surveillance system. Whether we like it or not, 5G is coming, this fifth-generation technology, and we need it in this community. We need it because how many of us call our friends who say, "Don't call me on my cellphone, we don't get good reception here." Imagine you're on a rafting or hiking trip and you have an emergency. 911 isn't going to help you. So we need that expanded system. Right now, CalNet got a $9 million grant from the state to expand to get fixed 4G service, which will provide for high-stream, fast service on your cellphone for internet. So, instead of being often in the situation where we're opposing something, I'd like to see some effort to work towards making sure that we're able to have these things online quickly that meet our needs. The League of California Cities covers all kinds of communities, not just rural areas. So, I'd ask you, I know you're short on resources, gee, we keep loading the staff up with all kinds of things to look at, but I think it's one thing to explore, to see what kind of method you could use to have it, rather than this general blanket challenge to the process. If you're going to have 5G system, it has to be a system. There has to be some uniform process and ways to set it up throughout the state, instead of having a patchmail system. At first, it'll be extraordinarily expensive, and like, everything goes down very quickly after that, but only if you help. So I think your letter should be much more modest and include something that's more positive about the need for it, commensurate with matching the needs of local communities like ours. That's what I would add for you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Actually, just speaking to that last item, my, you know, I've read through it, and I kind of, I understood what they were talking about in terms of the mechanics of it and the size of the units and everything. I think it's more along the lines of trying to keep some sort of local control over these things. It's not that the city is against putting in small cell towers, it's the fact that the state of California was basically going to make it almost impossible from stopping anybody from doing anything.
Exactly.
And that's a whole different animal. And so I think that the letter we're writing is appropriate to stop that process, and there's nothing stopping us, I think, from, if someone were to come in here and say, "I want to start putting together a network of small cells," from us to entertain that idea, and we would certainly be able to do that with our present staff. What we didn't want is the state of California dictating to us, like they do so frequently, about how we can run our city. And so, I mean, I, the concern is real, and I, and the need is going to be there, but I think what we're doing here is just stopping Sacramento from doing something, and then we can always go and do things on our own. So, anyway, that's that. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 11.1, adopt a resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented. Steve Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Over the past six months, the city's budget team, which is comprised of all department heads and the city manager, has collectively developed both the operating budget and CIP budget in a manner that aligns with the city council's established fiscal policies and maintains essential program delivery to the greatest extent possible. As part of that process, the council held a special operating budget and capital improvement program workshop on May 24th, and staff presented departmental requests for alternative service levels, capital outlay, CIP projects, conference training and travel, and received input from the city council and the public. An initial budget open hearing was held on June 13th. Two Measure HL neighborhood chats were held on January 31st, as well as May 30th, to discuss the potential street sewer system and water system projects that should be constructed over the next five years. Both the proposed operating budget and CIP budget include the same expenditure assumptions as was discussed at the initial budget open hearing on June 13th. Since the initial budget open hearing, staff has revised its sales tax forecast based on State Board of Equalization's latest forecast, which we received in late May for the next 12 months, which are favorable overall to the city. All other revenue assumptions have remained the same. The proposed operating budget is balanced and totals $19,114,112, of which $8,703, excuse me, $8,703,846 is for general fund uses. The proposed CIP budget totals $10,353,585 and includes 25 projects from replacing the antiquated phones at the police department to reconstructing Canal Street. The proposed CIP budget also includes a robust potholing and crack sealing project. The budget is a living document that can be revised at any time. Staff plans on returning to the council this fall when options for funding the additional equipment and positions needed for the Public Works Division, as well as the Water Reclamation Facility, as part of the sewer and water rate study. We also plan on preparing options for the replacement of the Corporation Yard roof, and we plan on returning to the council later this year with a five-year CIP as discussed at the Measure H, Measure L Neighborhood Chat meetings. Staff will also coordinate with the county to make a presentation to the council regarding animal services performed in the city. I would like to publicly thank the budget team, the city council, for once again balancing this year's budget, which is a responsible plan for operating the city over the next 12 months and an investment in the future. I also want to thank Rebecca Neves and the Measure HL Sales Tax Committee for their help in developing the proposed CIP budget. Also, a shout-out to George Sabato for allowing us to use his image of the Parade of Nations event that adorns the cover of the budget. So with that, I would respectfully request the council approve this budget for fiscal year 1718, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments?
That's my only comment. We've been through this, you know, five, five different times in different ways, but just, you know, well done. Thank you for all your work, and I, this presentation is very user-friendly and a great tool for us to refer to as the year, the year ahead, just, you know, really appreciate the user-friendly nature of it and all your work.
Thank you. Anything else? Other questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Mark? Do you have any questions or comments?
I was talking about the city manager.
Well, I know, but...
Mr. Warren, did we get the conversion regarding Public Works, which was one of my huge concerns in our last meeting, to get them restaffed? We had a half-time position in there, and we were going to change that to allow Steve to add one full-time employee now, and then look at future staffing as we approach midterm? Did we get the full-time person in, the final budget?
We have the, it's a, it's a half-time position, but we're looking at trying to, you know, fund it full-time eventually. But at this time, the budget is, it assumes a half-time senior maintenance worker position, which is in addition to your existing staffing.
Yeah, and just as a clarification, it's actually a full-time position, but it's not slated to be hired until mid-year.
Correct.
Which makes it, but it is full-time, and that is actually...
Ah, that's it, okay.
Yeah.
That department is just so woefully understaffed. I mean, they're going from emergency, emergency, that there's, I got a complaint over the weekend that all the stop signs on Cedar Ravine are covered up by the trees that grew from the six feet of rain that we got, and by God, they are covered up. So, I mean, then there's no time for the guys to get to that kind of stuff, so, and that was why I was hoping that we could launch that a little sooner than mid-year, which would be January of 18?
Sure. Yes. Well, if council would like to give us that direction, what I would recommend, we could go ahead with this budget as proposed, but give us direction to come back with a proposal to try to expedite and bring that forward. We can, we can do that.
I thought we did, in a, I mean, when you were proposing the budget, that we...
I think there was some confusion there. I didn't, I didn't get that, the formal recommendation was made to make that change, and maybe that's my fault for not picking up, and I apologize.
It was a strong suggestion.
A strong suggestion, okay.
Not strong enough.
So, it's up to the council. If you would like us to try to find a way to do that, we will, we'll go back and do some searching and see what we can do.
Yeah, refresh memory, wasn't a part of the salary survey we were going to be doing, that process?
No.
No?
It's more related to, we had proposed that some of this come from the new SB1 funding, which we know we're not going to get anything until maybe even January, February, is what it sounds like, is how we were going to help fund that position, as it would be specifically working on streets is where it's designed.
That's right.
So, that was kind of, originally, we thought, originally, we were looking at maybe be able to do it a full year, till we found out we were going to get less money and get it later than we assumed that we were going to get it. Originally, we were looking at maybe November, and now it's after the first of the year, at least, I think, and maybe later, and it's a much smaller amount than we assumed. But, you know, there are perhaps a couple of alternatives that I've discussed with Dave Warren, that maybe we can find a way to bring that position on sooner if the council would like us to try and do that.
And I guess, John, there's a, from a practical standpoint, I'm sorry.
No, I said, thank you.
Oh. From a practical standpoint, even if you said, "Let's go hire someone today," they wouldn't be hired for a while. So, we're really not talking about a full six-month increment. We're really talking about something that's actually going to end up being four, three, four, five, four months of an increment, because it does take time to bring somebody on and get them, you know, actually hire them, so, through that process.
And I think what really told the true story is when Mark brought up that we have gone from 14 to seven employees. That's ridiculous, you know, and we just have to work on building this back up, because it's such an important part of our city and maintenance, et cetera, et cetera.
You don't have any disagreement from us?
And I get it. I know it's all about money, et cetera, but we need to work on it. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? You have any questions down there at the end? Okay, great. I would like to join Councilmember Thomas and just thank the staff for putting this together. I've now been through three of these, it's always fun. It's, and I think we're really starting to get better at the storytelling behind the numbers and getting the numbers out, and there's always improvements that could be made, and we'll think, think of new ways to tell that story. I know, I'm going to sound hopeful and cynical, all at the same time. I would, I would, I would be hopeful that the public would actually look at the budget, the folks that live here in town, see how the money is spent, where it goes, and see that a lot of thought and effort goes into, you know, slicing and dicing every dime we get, and really checking it out. The cynical part of me is, is that, and it's not even cynical, it's practical. People want to see results on the street, and that's all they really care about, and that's okay, and that's probably all they ever should care about, is just not so much how we get to the sausage, but that it tastes really good once we're done. And this is a fairly tasty sausage we've got here. So, I'm pretty pleased with it. Does the public, would the public wish to weigh in on this very fine budget that we have here?
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I would like to congratulate the city and Dave Warren and the staff especially for doing the almost impossible job of balancing this budget. I do have one concern still in Placerville's proposed budget, and that is that fixing the roof at the Corporation Yard should not remain a victim of deferred maintenance. The weather at mid-year is likely to make roof repairs more difficult and more expensive. Plus, the longer we wait, the more damage will occur, and that will increase costs. I am reading, am I reading the current total cost correctly, at over $90,000? Pretty soon, it will be less expensive to replace the entire building. In the meantime, I guess our hard-working crews will have to man the buckets and dodge the raindrops. The city's approach reminds me of an old joke. Someone goes to visit a friend and finds buckets everywhere filling up with rainwater with leaks from his roof, and asks, "Why don't you fix your roof?" The reply was, "Can't fix the roof in the rain." The next question, "Why didn't you fix it last summer when it wasn't raining?" The reply, "It doesn't leak when it isn't raining, so it doesn't need to do it then."
Thank you, Sue.
Peg Vanderkar, Placerville resident, and this is a spur of the moment thought regarding those Cedar Ravine trees blocking the stop signs, and I come down this Thompson Way and turn right or left onto Cedar Ravine often, and there's a big weedy bush that grows up every year, and it occurred to me that I could just take some clippers, except I'd be trespassing, and cut down that bush. So the thought that occurs to me now is wondering whether private citizens would be allowed to be encouraged to do some of that cutting of leaves back from stop signs, and we sort of take charge of our own environment a bit. I don't know what the legal ramifications are, and I'm not going to go trespassing all over the place, although that bush may come down one of these days, because it's very dangerous turning either way.
If we just say the word.
You barely see through the weeds. So, anyway, just a thought.
I would suggest that you give yourself a little bit of time between this meeting and that event, just to make sure that there's not a straight line to that bush disappearing down there. We would strongly suggest that you not go and try to clip around the tree. We will eventually get to, with the maintenance and stuff, and trim up everything. We appreciate your gusto. Now, I will tell you one thing, if you happen to walk, like, by the memorial, I'm going to do this myself. If you happen to walk by Memorial Monument Park over there by the Christmas tree, by the, by, there's a few weeds in there. I was by there, and I, if I, I was going somewhere else.
I do pull weeds.
I frequently just pull weeds, like, that grow up in the gutters and stuff, because I, there's a couple somewhere that I saw just recently that I'm thinking, I got to stop and just yank those bad boys out, because, but that's us. We would not suggest that you do that, because that would probably be dangerous. Anyway, but yes, it's part of the maintenance thing, we will get to it. We're always trying to get more people out there to work on the very basics, and of course, as Mark Acuna pointed out, when it rains a lot, things grow really fast, so So, we will try to take care of that. Are there any other comments? Okay. Let's bring it back. Oh, the roof. We talked about the roof. Let's talk about the roof.
We are committed to bringing something back to you before it rains.
Yes.
To look at how we can solve that problem. So, we will be bringing something back to you prior to...
Okay.
That we want to refine our numbers a little bit. I've already taught Steve Yule about that and how much we can do to try and get something done that works for us this year. So, we will bring something back to you prior to the rain.
Right. Okay, great. And the other thing, the only, before we take the vote here, I would like to see, one of the things I was very pleased with, and I know that before I got on the council, times were tough, so this is not about any group of individuals, but it is nice, you know, and hopefully, you know, everything will kind of trend in the right direction for the city over the next few years. It is nice to start to see us putting and investing back in our community. We're doing it human capital within the city. We're also doing it in capital improvements out in the town and maintenance out in the town. So, it's good to see some, again, real money now, not just putting Band-Aids on really big potholes, but actually going out and starting to do some serious work within the community. It's an investment in our community. The residents of Placerville should be very pleased that they're starting to see us start to do that, and that will include a more robust trimming of shrubbery around stop signs and other things. So, anyway...
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a res...
Did we do that?
No.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Sorry, I thought we had. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018 operating budget with, and capital improvement program budget as presented.
Okay.
I'd like to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll?
Question, please.
Oh, I'm going to add, with the suggestions that were...
Oh, okay.
I'd make that a part of my...
Would that be a part of the motion to make the...
The suggested...
The maintenance worker...
You have the, yeah, Public Works, a full-time maintenance worker effective this budget year, the new budget.
And the roof.
And the roof to be completed.
Yeah. Before it rains.
Before it rains.
Before it rains.
Of course, now it'll rain like in August.
The city manager apparently knows, Steve Cleveland knows that date apparently.
Yeah, that's a bit arbitrary, but okay. With those two provisions, we have a motion and a second. The second.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
All righty, well done.
And if I could, now, Mr. Mayor, just take a minute to thank all the staff members, the department heads, the chief of police, and the city engineer, and everybody, Mr. Yule endlessly. We sat through three budget meetings, and I want to congratulate Sue Rodman, being the only member of the community that saw the value in attending the process. We started out a little over a million dollars in the hole with the, probably a little bit more than that, and we prioritized, and then we prioritized again. And while we look around and we see Wall Street booming and things going crazy, the dollars come very slowly here, and this is still a small town. And as you frequently advertise it, Mr. Mayor, this is an exciting process, the budget.
Yeah, I think so.
And the dollars really are very precious, and they are not, the process is not taken lightly, and I really enjoyed having, maybe Dave had some sleepless nights, but we actually got to see the first cut with our department heads at the table with what they really needed, and then we, as a big team, worked it down to what we just passed here this evening. And it really is a responsible budget and really responsible input from those department heads and our city manager, and I just thank everyone for their input and look forward to continued financial security here in town.
Yes.
Councilmember Acuna, I really appreciate your comments. Thank you very much for highlighting that. As you pointed out, this budget represents also enormous concessions from every single department within our city, and throughout this engage, very engaged process, I was enormously impressed with the mutual support that our department heads show each other, that there, each department had incredibly legitimate needs that did not make it in this budget, needs that we would have loved to have funded, and they, you know, sacrificed even some more critical needs for another department's more critical needs, and it was a very mutually supportive process, and it shows you the character and the caliber of our entire staff, and it is an absolute privilege to be a part of the city and to witness that. It was probably the most harmonious budget process that I've ever seen, and just, you know, commend each and every one of you for that.
I'd like to think it was tremendous leadership from the mayor, but I'm just saying.
That goes without saying.
Well, she forgot to mention that.
I'm just saying.
That was, I was going to bring that up next.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, anyway, all right.
I couldn't agree more.
It was tremendous leadership from the mayor.
On your part.
Okay.
Even if you did forget one meeting.
I didn't, I was there, I was just late.
Ouch.
You know.
You walked into that one, sorry.
I guess so. Here, anyway. All right. Eleven point two, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriations limit, the GAN limit, for fiscal year 2016, 2017, and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a routine item that you take action annually. Section 7910 of the Government Code requires each local government agency to establish an appropriation or GAN limit by resolution. Each year, the city is required to adjust its GAN limit by both the prior year per-capita personal income increment and the prior year change in population. The change in per-capita personal income was actually 5.37 percent, and the change in population was 0.17 percent. Based on these factors, the fiscal year 1617 GAN limit is calculated to be 21,197,404. The general fund proceeds revenue subject to the GAN limit is 6,271,378, leaving 14,926,026 of unused appropriation limit. Once again, Placerville is well within its GAN limit, with that staff requests the council to adopt the resolution establishing the GAN limit for fiscal year 1617 and determining compliance with Government Code Section 7910. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about this riveting arcane artifact?
Another exciting piece of budget work.
Yes, it is that. Okay. Actually, it is very interesting. Okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
On the GAN limit.
Okay, we're going to bring it back.
I move that we adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation GAN limit for fiscal year 2016, 17.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I am assuming we have to do this by roll call, because this is a money thing. Okay, let's do a roll call on this one.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
All righty. All right, we have some action items here. Adopt a resolution of intention to initiate amendments to Title 10 zoning ordinance of the City Code regarding definitions of types of lodging facilities, including the regulation of short-term rentals. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city's zoning ordinance is currently silent on short-term vacation rentals as a land use, which means that the use is currently not a permitted use. We do have two exceptions. One, our bed and breakfast establishments, which are allowed in all residential zones, subject to a conditional use permit approved by the Planning Commission. And two, in each of the single-family residential zones, we do have what's allowed, the renting of no more than one room. The zoning ordinance does not specify whether the renting of not more than one room permits short-term lodging accommodations for transient guests, which is less than thirty days' stays versus the renting of a room to a tenant, which would be permanent residency. City staff began receiving complaints from neighbors and from other interested parties regarding short-term vacation rentals back in 2013 on each of the two vacation rentals that were known to exist at that time. One complaint focused on noise and parking impacts to the adjoining neighborhood, while the others stated concerns of vacation rentals allow for unfair business competition to the more regulated bed and breakfast establishments and the more traditional commercial lodging facilities such as hotels and motels. Other impacts include encroachment of commercial lodging facilities in residential neighborhoods, and the loss of single-family residential housing stock, and the potential loss of affordable housing units. Staff estimates that currently there may be up to eight short-term rentals located within the city, and that's based on known units and a cursory review of vacation rental websites. So, could be a little bit more, could be a little less. We're not exactly sure at this point. Staff is proposing amendments to the zoning code to create a distinction between owner-occupied short-term rentals, which are typically known as home stays, versus non-owner-occupied short-term rentals, which are known more typically as vacation rentals, and then the more commonly known commercial transient lodging and residential dwelling units known as bed and breakfast establishments. Staff is requesting that the council authorize staff to amend the zoning ordinance to distinguish and address these types of temporary commercial lodging types, to include but not limited to identification of zones that would be appropriate for the various types of lodging; two, establishment of a permitting process and fee schedule; three, occupancy limitations and parking requirements; and four, the collection of transient occupancy tax. Our recommendation is that the council would adopt a resolution of intent to initiate amendments to Title 10, which is the zoning ordinance of the City Code regarding definitions and types of lodging facilities, including the regulation of short-term vacation rentals. That concludes staff's report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay. Just, I'm sure everybody kind of knows what we're talking about, but this is kind of like Airbnb stuff and HomeAway and those kinds of sites that do that sort of thing, just to kind of give everybody a sort of a conventional point of reference.
That is correct.
Okay. And this is going to start a lengthy process that will go through the Planning Commission. There'll be hearings and meetings and all that sort of thing.
That is correct. Census would be a legislative act that would first be considered by the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the council for your consideration, final enactment of any changes to the code.
All right, so we're just kicking the process off at this point.
You're just basically directing staff to begin the process if you wish us to go forward with these regulations.
No, I think it's worthy. On the board of directors down at SAICAG, we kind of, we, I mean, we don't talk about this a lot, but talking to my colleagues down there, this is an issue that is becoming more and more prevalent in all sorts of towns, and they're going through this sort of thing. So, it is very timely and something that needs to be at least discussed at the very minimum. Okay, are there any other comments or questions for staff?
I'd just like to say that I'm all in favor of us looking into this, and I was, you just kind of alluded to this, but I was wondering, have you done inquiries about what's going on in other cities, towns, counties, et cetera?
Yes, we have. I have spoken to a few folks from some of the other cities and counties that deal with vacation rentals. Personally, when I was with El Dorado County, I was involved with, working with, well, not really working with them, but observing what the city of South Lake Tahoe was doing quite some time ago, when they were having a lot of problems with vacation rentals that were basically taking over entire neighborhoods, and that was prior to Airbnb and some of the other online platforms that are now available, which is making it very easy to be able to advertise one's home as a lodging facility. And so, I was involved with some of the, putting together of the code for El Dorado County as well. There is actually a number of different cities. Some cities, of course, are vacation destinations, and they have a lot more issue with this problem as far as the impacts on the housing stock and on neighborhoods. Fortunately for the city of Placerville, at least at this time, it's sort of a new use that we've seen, and so I think this is a good opportunity to get a head start on it before it becomes more of a problem.
So, maybe you talked about you were involved with the county. Because of my affiliation with some of the folks from Tahoe, et cetera, I know that they, this is still, and you were there several years ago, this is still posing quite a problem up there, and I'm wondering why, if they have their regs and stuff, why it can't be enforced or it isn't being? I understand that companies are coming in and buying up practically complete neighborhoods, and it's posing quite a problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
No, but what is the enforcement level of this when you do pass these?
Well, I think with respect to the city of Placerville, we don't really have a whole lot of them.
No, I realize that. It's just a question mostly.
So, I don't see an enforcement problem, but I think what the city, at least from staff's perspective, we're looking at putting a tight regulation on what we would call non-owner-occupied vacation rentals versus owner-occupied vacation rentals. I think the issue that, at least, we're accustomed to seeing, say, in South Lake Tahoe, both within the city of South Lake Tahoe and in the county, are non-owner-occupied vacation rentals, where somebody buys a single-family dwelling unit and then converts it into a commercial lodging facility, and then typically you can have upwards of twenty folks coming into a home on a weekend that really disrupts the whole neighborhood. We don't, fortunately, we haven't had that here.
We don't have that. No, I realize it. Okay, it was just a question that I was, I know it doesn't pertain to us, because we don't have that much property, et cetera, but, okay, thank you.
Quick question, and thank you for, like, my fellow councilmember said, getting ahead of this curve, I think it's very appropriate that we address this in our city. Couple of questions. Are we currently getting any TOT tax from the vacation rentals that are currently operating?
I did consult with our finance director, and I understand that we are collecting TOT tax on one vacation rental here in the city.
Okay. All right. And secondly, following your last comments, through the permitting process, would we be able to perhaps regulate the number of non-owner-occupied vacation rentals in different neighborhoods? Is there a process for that, so, you know, neighborhoods don't get overrun?
We can do, as far as we could just not allow them entirely, or you can regulate them. I know I've seen in some codes where they only allow so many to be within a distance of another one.
Right, right. So, there are some mechanisms for protecting the character of our neighborhoods?
Yes, there is.
And quality of our neighborhoods.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. And last question, as we look at this going forward, certainly, as I've gone online, you know, different houses have different limits for the number of overnight guests. Is there a way to regulate the use of the house? And, for example, let's say there's a large Victorian that is a vacation rental, has three, four bedrooms, but then it's a wedding party, let's say, books it for the weekend, and then they decide to have the rest of the family come and do a, you know, a party there throughout late night, that eventually turns into an event center for that night. Are there any regulations on the use of the house, not just the number of bedrooms that it will accommodate?
Yes, absolutely, and that would be the same with the regulations we currently would have on a bed and breakfast establishment.
Right.
I mean, they're highly regulated, and I think that was some of the issues that we're getting feedback from the owners of bed and breakfast, is that these vacation rentals were just coming in...
Right.
Completely unregulated.
Exactly.
When they're highly regulated, bed and breakfasts are required to be owner-occupied, and any kind of event that they would have, like, if they were going to have, say, a wedding reception or something of that nature, then that would have to go through the conditional use permit process where all the neighbors are notified...
Very onerous, yes.
Before a public hearing, and so the conditions are placed on that in order to ameliorate any kind of concerns or noise issues and those kinds of things that could impact the neighborhood.
Right, so I will look forward to seeing how we employ those same safeguards on vacation rentals going forward. So, all right, thank you very much for...
You're welcome.
Moving forward with this.
Would the public wish to comment on this particular item?
I am a manager of a short-term rental in the city of Placerville. So, I want, I know this was just the beginning, and you guys were just, you know, broaching this subject, but I wanted to have a few thoughts just to get into the process. With all due respect, I know this is a complicated economic space, and not everybody under With all due respect, I know this is a complicated economic space and not everybody understands it's changing. And there's a lot of misconceptions. And I'm hearing them right here. So, I, I read the document earlier and felt like I needed to come and say a few things. And again, with all due respect, this is complicated. So, I just want to make three points. First, competition with motels and hotels and bed-and-breakfast. Two, noise, encroachment, neighborhood effects, things like that. Three, unfair business practices. Okay. First one, competition. We are not in competition with hotels and motels or even bed-and-breakfasts. I know that's a common misperception. We just aren't. I know my customers, I know my clientele. I'm in contact with them on the internet before they get to my property. I meet them at the property or my staff or, you know, my daughter. We talk, we meet and greet with our customers. So, we know them. Nobody just comes and just, you know, gets into the property. You can't just bring a Visa card and, and stay for the night. Doesn't work that way in this, in this space. Very interactive, very personal, highly regulated. Nobody would have a big event. That, that's insane. I mean, that's the horror stories that you hear. We, all the people who run these things will not allow that. Maybe there's some, you know, in Coloma or something where they do that, but it's very rare. Our clientele are not choosing between us and hotels. They aren't. There, there's no way they're going to choose. When I lose a client, a booking, it's to another short-term rental. I lose a clientele to a Coloma short-term rental or to an Apple Hill rental. Nobody's going to go to a hotel. It's very typical, if you talk to these people, say, "I never stayed at hotels. I, I never stayed at a motel. It's just not, it doesn't happen." They look for short-term rentals. They're looking for a place with a dock and a lake, bring their kid. They're looking for something near downtown Placerville and enjoy an evening. That's the sort of thing. So, anyway, that's, that's a big misconception. There's, it's, it's a different space. Number two, noise and encroachment. So, I do hear some complaints from neighbors on the street. They're not about my property, they're about the other long-term rentals. Okay? That's the problem on our street, the long-term rentals. I do see encroachment and degraded properties. They're not, I, we have the best property on the street. We put a lot of money into it. This property next door is trash. I'm, just to be honest. If you saw it, you'd agree. It would be better off if it was erased. We have, we have the, I think it's the best property on the street. It's a very nice property. And we, and we make sure it is. We have a gardener. Comes once a week. Okay? We hire contractors, we got things fixed up. Let me tell you the rules for our guests. I'll just read them off here. No smoking, no parties or events. Please be respectful of the neighborhood. Strictly no loud music or noise, no events, no smokers, no pets. Only paying guests in the rental party are allowed on the premises. No smoking of any kind is permitted anywhere on the property. Any trace of any smoke odor is considered a damage charge to the guest. No pets. Guests may not host visitors or other people on the property for parties, events, gatherings, meals, visits, meetings, accommodations, or any other purpose. We've got to make this very clear. At all times, use of the property is strictly limited to the registered guest party. Our capacity is six people. It can't be, I went to the neighbor next door. I gave her my name and phone number. I said, "Anytime you have any problem, you call me." I've not had a call. Because our guests know what these rules are. It's a different culture. This isn't a hotel-motel culture. This is, you're going to someone's house culture. We have a kitchen. Never gets used. Why not? They go to downtown Placerville. They come here to spend money. We're bringing in money to Placerville. These are highbrow customers. They want to have a good time. They want to have an evening on the town. They want to go to, spend money at, at the restaurant. They ask me, "What's the good restaurant? Where do we go for breakfast?" I say, "Look, we've got coffee and tea here. This is pretty good coffee. But if you want the really good coffee, you've got to go downtown." I have a map. It's got a big red circle on it. This is Main Street. This is where, I've got an orange line. This is how you get to Main Street. They all go there. That's what they do. Okay.
Excuse me, can you kind of wrap it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Unfair business practices. We're in competition with short-term rentals in the Coloma, Apple Hill. If this goes forward, we are going to be penalized against our competitors. We will, they'll kill us. So, that's the unfair business practices. We're not going to survive. This is the way the economy is changing and moving. And so, we, if this was forward, we will have to leave Placerville and take our business elsewhere.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there, are there any other comments?
Have we, have we, have we made a motion? I'd be happy to make a motion to, to approve this. Oh.
Sue Rodman. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and I have several friends who live in South Lake Tahoe and have commented about vacation rentals. People are actually building huge homes up there strictly to use as vacation rentals and it is destroying some of the neighborhoods. So, I think it's very good that we get out ahead on this one and make sure that we've got some regulations in place so we don't get swamped.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else wish to comment?
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms., can you pull the microphone down? There you go.
I am an immigrant, a legal immigrant. I am also an American citizen, a loyal American citizen of many decades. I believe in doing things the right way. In any community or country or even a family at the kitchen table, playing a board game, if you're going to have a maximum positive experience, you need to have guidelines, you need to have regulations or rules. I think it's reasonable and it's logical to provide guidelines and I appreciate, I'm so sorry, I'm, I don't, I know you, but I don't know your name.
It's Pierre.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm back. Thank you, Pierre, for doing this. And as, as a member said, it is good to be ahead of the curve and anticipate problems before they happen so that we have a better chance of fixing those problems. I would say to the neighbor who feels that if you make regulations, he will be, he will have unfair competition. He won't. He'll just be paying the same fees and getting the same licenses and permits as the bed-and-breakfast are. There are many things about the bed-and-breakfast that create a lot of work, but they're so worthwhile. The examinations yearly and inspections and making the owners aware of the standards that must be met, this is all good. And I think my time is up, but I do want to thank you and I hope you will consider, from a point of view of fairness, that it will solve problems for you ahead of time if you can think things through and have guidelines. And then if people are not willing to live by the guidelines and the standards that Placerville requires, well, I guess they can go someplace else and live. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this particular topic? Okay. We will bring it back here. Go ahead.
Quick clarification. First of all, thank you, everyone, that, that spoke. Appreciate your comments and your insights, Mr. Hunter. So, to clarify that, Pierre, this resolution is not outlawing vacation rentals. It is providing a mechanism for them to function within the city of Placerville. Is that correct?
Well, what's before you is basically a resolution of intent that we're going to hold public hearings before the planning, planning commission and bring.
Sure.
And a recommendation to you. Currently, short-term vacation rentals are not permitted.
Right.
They're, they're not legal in the city of Placerville unless you have a conditional use permit for a bed-and-breakfast or if you're renting one room, because our ordinance is sort of silent or doesn't distinguish between long-term versus a permanent residence that you're renting a room to. So, that would be an owner-occupied. I could see where if it was an owner-occupied unit, single-family residential unit, and they're short-term rental or a single room, then you might say they're in compliance with our current code. So, those are the, really the two circumstances where it's, it's currently permitted. So, we're going to look at, we're going to have to get feedback and determine whether or not the city wants to allow single-family residential units to become commercial vacation rentals, which are, which we would say are not owner-occupied as opposed to owner-occupied, which we would distinguish as calling them home stays.
Got it. Right. So, we're launching a very public process, as Mrs. Smith said, to, to get in the weeds and understand all the ramifications and sort through that process within our zoning ordinance.
That's correct. Because I think one of the things too, the council needs to, to, needs to recall, we've gone through a lot of effort to bring our housing element into.
Yes.
Compliance with state housing law. So, within the city of Placerville, we do have, you know, we do have a shortage of units.
Yes.
You can ask anybody that wants to rent a home, they can't rent a home.
Right.
And so, the competition really isn't, isn't so much with the hotels and motels. The competition is with the single-family residential use.
Housing stock.
Which is not commercial. So, you've got a commercial type of activity that's sort of coming in and it's going to eat up our housing stock. And so, we need to look at, how can we do that or if we should do that at all? And so, I think that's the big question.
It's an appropriate conversation to have with our community. Yes. All right. Thank you very much.
Comments?
Well, now I have a question.
Good.
Mr. Rivas, does the county currently have a short-term vacation rental regulation outside the Tahoe Basin?
I don't know. Because when I, when I was with El Dorado County, it, the ordinance was only affecting the Tahoe Basin.
Okay. I've recently been helping someone with an issue with a short-term vacation rental in Camino and have had a little discussion with the county. Apparently, they do have regulations now that you have to fill out an application and you do have to register with the tax collector. And there are, I don't know that we would be so exempt that, as the gentleman said, that he would lose business to Coloma. If somebody in Coloma is operating improperly, they will be under regulations. So, we need to get that confirmed too as part of this process. And I, you know, I think what we've heard tonight is someone who is a very conscientious owner of an, apparently as Mr. Rivas has described, an illegal operation. But at the same time, I've heard horror stories from South Lake Tahoe and other communities where, and including the person that I'm trying to help locally, where neighborhoods have been ruined from absentee owners that have turned their properties into disuse. So, I think we're very responsible to be taking this step and starting a very public process on this. So, thank you.
I, I can only speak to my own experiences. And some, about four or five years ago, we went to visit our son in Italy. And we were going to Parma, which is not exactly a vacation Mecca, a nice town, but not a vacation hotspot in Italy. And we, that was our very first Airbnb thing. And I don't think in the years since then, if we go into a big city, I don't think I've set foot in a hotel in five or six years. And it doesn't matter if I'm staying one night or three nights or four nights because it's almost always less expensive and it's almost always a better experience. And I do use the kitchen frequently when I go to places. I also like to eat out, but I will use the kitchen. This is, and this is going to be an inseparable part of our future for some time off until we decide we don't like this idea anymore and then the taste will change and then they'll go off and other things will happen. I think having the discussion is very worthwhile and having, and talking to everybody that's involved is very worthwhile. It was interesting to see though, it was an article, I think in the New York Times, it might have been in the Sunday Times, it might have been, I think it was in the Sunday Times this last week, weekend, about how Airbnb is actually beginning to change their model away from the example that the gentleman talked about and more towards a hotel, where literally it was like, "Come here, stay a night, don't talk to the guest," you know, credit card in, credit card out, no interaction. And, and of course, the Airbnb community at large was kind of bridling at this because that's not what they were doing, but it is kind of what Airbnb has seen. The other thing too is Airbnb at least, and I think HomeAway and some of the big websites, are starting to now cooperate with localities and say, "Yeah, we understand that you have these things. We want to work with you." I think it could be a win-win-win. I don't think it has to be a negative for anybody. And I think it's a good idea to have this discussion because it's not, I don't, and I don't want to say it's not going away and like it's a bad thing, like it's a bunch of bugs that aren't going away, but it's like, it's a, it's a good thing that's not going to go away. And in a town that's challenged with places to stay in general, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the stock and I think it could all be kind of worked out here. So, anyway, do we, did, did we ever get a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve staff's recommendation.
I, I will second that motion. I frequently do that. Okay. I infrequently do that. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the good comments out there. I really do appreciate that. Now, come to all the hearings and the meetings. This is where, this is where the heavy lifting happens and this is where people tend to disappear. And I get, I get a little agitated just like that. Okay. 12.1, adopt a resolution approving an agreement with Herrera Engineering Consultants.
12.2.
Yeah, it's 12.2. That's what I said.
You said 12.
No, I didn't. I said 2. 12.2. In the amount of $18,700 to prepare an application for a clean water state revolving fund loan and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we recently approved the Johnson's Control Agreement to, that took us to a certain point in that project. The next step was for us to secure financing for the project. One of the options we discussed with you early on was the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan, which specifically contains a green project reserve, which means that we could potentially qualify for forgiveness of a portion of the principal on that loan, up to as much as 50%. So, we were very excited about being able to do that. We've began the process of, we've met with the state board on a couple of occasions already to see the process and what we need to go through with that. And it is a very long process, a very, I will call it somewhat tedious process, very detailed, a lot of work in preparation of the project report and et cetera that is necessary for this. And based on that and reviewing the, the work and what would be required to do that, we felt that it would be necessary or advisable for us to reach out for special consulting help to do this application. Previously, you know, when we got an SRF loan for the wastewater treatment plant, we employed the services of Steve Herrera. He wasn't Herrera Engineering Services at that time, but he, as he is now, but he assisted us with preparation of that SRF loan application at that time. So, he is familiar with the process. Since that time, he has also been very involved and is our consultant, as you'll see on the next agenda item, on an annual basis with assisting us at our wastewater treatment plant. So, he's very familiar with the project, very familiar with the site and familiar with this process of the SRF loan process. So, at this time, we're requesting that council approve this resolution, which will approve an agreement with Herrera Engineering Consultants in an amount not to exceed $18,700. And it will be built on a time and materials basis as we go forward to prepare the SRF loan application and also approving budget appropriation from the Sewer Enterprise Fund contingency for unforeseen expenditures. I want to note that, that amount coming from that contingency, as we proceed and, and we assume we'll be successful with the loan process, that amount can be rolled into the financing process and the Sewer Enterprise Fund can be refunded, that amount. In fact, there is actually a process that, a planning process through the SRF loan process that you can apply for those funds early on for the planning and this, preparation of this application is part of that planning process. So, we may look at that even earlier than when we were actually approved for the loan. So.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
No? Okay. Would anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Okay. Well, I saw you shake your fist in support. I saw you shake your fist in support.
Sue Rodman. This is exactly the kind of loan that we need to get for our things, where we got a 50% forgiveness and to do the things we need to do, so. Yay team.
Okay, thank you. There was a phrase, I don't think it got used a lot back in the late '90s when rich people started to like, you know, like, and it was called "the velocity of money." And it literally was, if I wanted something done really fast and you had a lot of money, say you wanted to get your house fixed, you know, in addition or something, you would just like take four times the amount of money that it required and you threw it at the project to get it done very quickly. And, and anyway, and I think this, not that we're rich people.
We're not doing that.
No. No, we are, actually.
Who is it?
Just, just, hear me out. You think you'd been, you think you guys had gotten used to this by now? It's been, what, two and a half years?
We're never used to you, John.
Okay. What I'm getting at here is that from the public standpoint, this might be seen like, well, why don't we just have staff do it? And they can do it and they could fit it into their schedules, except it would take a long time because our staff is overworked to a large degree. And this is a way of speeding up a process in a smart way. It'll require us to spend some money today. It'll be done quicker. It'll be done with expertise. It'll be done in concert with our staff, but it'll get done, I think, in a much more timely fashion. And that's where I was going with that story, okay? All right. Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
With that, I move the staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Oh, we're spending money. Call the roll.
Oh, that's right.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
All righty.
Thank you for your help with this process. We greatly appreciate it.
Oh, we are paying. Okay.
Well, still.
Okay. Adopt a resolution approving a consulting service agreement with Herrera Engineering Consultants, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $31,500 for FY 2017-18 to provide technical support with the city's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, permit for the Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility and other requirements for the wastewater collection system and authorize city manager to execute the same. City manager. Mr. Rivas.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The staff is requesting that the council approve three engineering consulting services agreements with Herrera Engineering Consultants. And I will summarize them as follows. The first one is the Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility and Wastewater Collection System Support Services Agreement. Steve Herrera, formerly with Somus, Inc., has provided consulting engineering services to the city for many years related to these permitting requirements and in assisting the operation of mandatory reporting. While with Somus, which was previously Owen Engineering, Mr. Herrera led the design team for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade that was completed in 2009 and is therefore intimately familiar with plant operations. The proposed agreement for this coming fiscal year is to perform similar tasks to those that were conducted in prior years to include the following. And just to note, the fee hasn't gone up. It's the same as it was last fiscal year or this current fiscal year. Task one, participate in and summarize the Central Valley Clean Water Association Conference Calls and advise the city regarding steps in the process for demonstrating that freshwater muscles of concern are not present in Hangtown Creek. You remember hearing about that one in the past. We still don't know.
We don't have any votes for them to come in on.
Keep them away.
Task number two, prepare the annual salinity evaluation minimization plan progress report that's required by our NPDES permit. Task three, conduct annual comprehensive facility compliance evaluations with the wastewater treatment plant staff. Provide training as required and evaluate stormwater sample results and prepare the 2017-18 annual report for city's submittal to the state in compliance with our industrial general stormwater permit. Task four will be to prepare a report of waste discharge for the city to the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Submittal of the report of waste discharge is required as part of our NPDES permit. This task includes a meeting with regional board staff and the subconsultant services by Robertson Bryan, Inc., which we call RBI, which has been assisting the preparation of the last report that was filed by the city. Task five is general support services, and these are generally provide services as required to assist the city in complying with our permit and other waste discharge requirements related to the wastewater treatment and collection system. This work is highly technical in nature and over and above the typical scope of work that has been provided in the past by the city wastewater reclamation facility staff. Because Mr. Herrera has worked with the city for so many years through the upgrade of the facility and providing support services in kind, his firm is uniquely qualified to engage in these activities on the city's behalf. The fees to provide the proposed services described are estimated to be $31,500, which is the same that was provided in the current fiscal year 2016-17 agreement. And these services would be rendered on a time and materials basis. That's the first agreement. The second agreement is the Small Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer System, which you probably heard MS4 permit support services. That's our drainage system. The city's municipal drainage system is required to be in compliance with the waste discharge requirements for stormwater discharges from Small Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Systems General Permit, MS4. The proposed agreement for fiscal year 2017-18 includes a number of tasks required by the MS4 permit, including attend city progress meetings and city-county coordination meetings and the preparation of related meeting minutes as a matter of progress and public record efforts. Provide training and guidance materials for city staff as it relates to permit requirements. Assist city staff in responding to any correspondence from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, including responding to the letter received from them regarding statewide trash amendments. And those are new amendments that are now coming into play regarding our ability to remove trash, paper, that kind of thing, from entering into our drainage system. I don't know how we're going to do that. Preparation of 2016-17 evaluation required by the City Performance Effectiveness Assessment and Improvement Plan. Five, preparation of the 2016-17 annual report that will be due October 15th of this year. And then any other tasks required to assist city staff with our small MS4 permit compliance. This work is also highly specialized in nature, extremely labor-intensive, and is over and above the typical scope of work that has been provided in the past by city staff. The MS4 permitting requirements are beyond the ability of current resources available to manage in-house. The fees to provide these proposed services described above are estimated to be $30,000, which is the same as was provided in the current fiscal year 2016-17. These services would also be rendered on a time and materials basis. So the last agreement, the third one, is our Domestic Water System Support Services Agreement. The water distribution system of the city is currently regulated by the State Water Resources Control Board statewide drinking water permit and other regulations implemented by the State Water Resources Control Board and the Department of Public Health. The proposed agreement for fiscal year 2017-18 is for the provision of general support services to assist city staff in the compliance with the requirements by the Department of Public Health, the California Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the State Water Resources Control Board. That would include drinking water requirements, statewide drinking water permit, and general support services to include drinking water requirements and reports related to city water rights, staff training and coordination, assistance with city staff and state staff, site visits as required, assist the city in applying for permit coverage, and preparation of reports, letters, and responses to any notices of violations that the city may receive, and attend any other meetings as required. The fees to provide the proposed general services described for this agreement is estimated to be $5,000, which is $5,000 less than provided in the fiscal year 2016-17 agreement. So we've come down, actually, in half. It was $10,000 for this current fiscal year. And these services would also be rendered on a time and materials basis. The costs associated with these three consulting services agreement would not exceed then the $31,500 or $30,000 or $5,000 respectively, totaling $66,500, which has been incorporated in our proposed fiscal year 2017-18 operating budget, which you just adopted. Staff is recommending you adopt a resolution approving a consultant services agreement with Herrera Engineering in the amount not to exceed $31,500 for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit for Hangtown Creek Reclamation Facility and other requirements for the wastewater collection system, authorizing the city manager to execute the same. Two, approving the consultant services agreement with Herrera Engineering in an amount not to exceed $30,000 to provide technical support services for the city's Small Municipal Separate Stormwater System MS4 permit and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And then three, approving a consulting services agreement with Herrera Engineering in the amount not to exceed $5,000 for this coming fiscal year to provide technical support with permits and other requirements regarding the city's domestic water system and authorize the city manager to execute the same. That concludes staff's report. I'll be having to answer any questions you have at this time.
Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
I don't think so. I don't have any.
Mark?
I would just like to thank Pierre for that. While that may seem very long and dry, these are incredibly important to be in compliance with and ahead of any issues with the state permitting processes.
And if anybody questions why we do things, that certainly answers.
And we're lucky to have someone who is still familiar with the facilities and can explain probably why every valve is where it is.
I agree. We should treat this with the respect and dignity that it deserves, and I will do that. Okay. Any questions or comments over here? Okay. Would the public wish to comment on this item?
Sue Rodman, Major HL Committee Member and resident of Placerville. And it's just like when you have a home and you get to the point where you say, ah, this is beyond homeowner stuff. I need an expert. And so you call in somebody who has that expertise. And I think that is exactly what we've done here. This is stuff that is very technical. And so having somebody who is willing to work for Placerville and do this for us is a plus. So yay team.
So who are you going to call? Okay. Steve, you are, you're not required to say anything if you, you're okay with it? Okay, good. All right. I thought I'd ask. All right. All right, let's bring it back here and...
I'll make a motion to approve item 12.3.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
I have a, you know, anyway, I'm sorry. Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
All right. Hey, we're done. Okay. Council reports from other agency meetings, El Dorado County Transit Authority. Nope, that's right. El Dorado County Transportation Commission. LAFCO.
LAFCO meets tomorrow, and they must be hard up for attendees because they made sure I was going to be there.
I know.
And just so everybody knows, LAFCO is going to issue this tomorrow, the City of Placerville's Municipal Services Review and Sphere of Influence Update. So we are actually on LAFCO's work schedule right now.
Those are interesting.
I'll have to, I get as your backup.
Yeah, my backup.
I get that. I should read it. Okay.
So are they just launching that process, Mark, or is it done?
We are launching the process tomorrow.
Oh, look forward to reading it.
SECAG.
This is actually the draft report that they've completed. It's ready to review now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So we can review it?
So we, I want to say we launched it around the first of the year.
Okay.
And so we're going to be reviewed.
Okay.
You know, we're going to see if we're really doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Does that come to us for any reason? To shape reform?
I don't think so.
I don't believe it does. However, it might not, it would be a good idea for you to have a copy of it when it's...
You know, I was thinking that very same thing because we've talked, we have different things that come up from time to time, and the sphere of influence is really crucial to...
And levels of service. It does...
Okay.
What we are providing.
Yes.
Cool. All right. SECAG. There was a, actually, it's kind of a neat thing. There was a kickoff for the Connect Card. It was the formal kickoff for the Connect Card. I have made fun of the Connect Card in the past. But it is actually out there and it works. And it's actually important because it means like if you get on an El Dorado Transit bus and you go to Sacramento, you can get on an RT bus, you can go over to YOLO Bus, you could tour the six-county SECAG region all on one card.
It's all good.
It's all fantastic. So anyway, that was done. And then we went to the SECAG meeting, but because we had, Supervisor Beercamp and I had to open the fair, we left right away. We did something, we had to vote on like something, and then we left. So there's really no other report other than the Connect Card. That was kind of a fancy thing. Okay, two by two.
We have an event coming up tomorrow night.
The CTC thing? Yeah. Well, we can...
Tell that afterwards.
Yeah. Two by two? Request for future agenda items? Any so far? Okay. Manager and staff reports?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Actually, probably should have covered this in the SECAG-y things. You want to talk about what we're going to go do tomorrow night? As the chair of our Transportation Commission?
Well, we're honoring the California Transportation Commission, SECAG, and our partners at Placer County and El Dorado County. And we're recognizing and thanking them for all their help in assisting us with various projects that they've done. So I think it's going to be a very nice fair. And well, the three of us that are on the Transportation Commission are going to go. And since I'm chair, I have to talk.
There you go. Nice. Okay. Let's see, anything else? Any other report? Okay, great. No other managers and staff reports? Okay. Upcoming items, items tentatively scheduled for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting of July 11th, our only July meeting, by the way. Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Agreement. Party Big Cut Sacramento Street Waterline Closeout? Yay! Blair's Lane Bridge Contract Change Orders? Huh? Local 39 Side Letter Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Road Maintenance Program? That'll be very exciting. I'm really looking to be robust. And, and yeah. And Parking Program Review? Oh, yes. Yeah, you almost forgot about that, huh? Okay.
I hope all these aren't going to be on the same meeting.
So we will adjourn. We will adjourn to our July 11th, 2017, 5:30 PM.